I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and roll call.
All right, Yagi.
Scott Carter. Kevin Cunningham. Having seized to approve meeting minutes from worst likely meeting from March 13th, 2023.
The only correction I have is in public comment, Lyons Park is spelled L-I-O-N-S, no apostrophe.
Any other ideas?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for pre-1323 with that correction. Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Under item D, which is public comment, is there anybody here who would like to wish us to speak tonight?
I have a couple of questions, Sean Peterson. Item number 10, you were talking about technical general statutes 8.2.
Yes.
Which section of that are you talking about?
That's the last section of that.
8.2 E. Now, that is to bypass planning and zoning regulations for town, is that right?
For town-owned properties.
Why do you feel that the town shouldn't have to go through?
Well, I appreciate your questions on this one, but when we get into that section, we can do that.
You will, at this point.
When we go through the meeting, why, is there something in particular you have a question on that?
My feeling is, the town is no better than any of the taxpayers. If the taxpayers aren't supposed to be planning and zoning, town should also. That's all. You're no better than us.
That's your opinion?
That's my opinion.
Anything else to say?
At this point.
Okay, well, this is public comment, so this is what you would say?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
It would be interesting that, you know, especially with Mr. Peterson, not even that a member of the committee.
No, because Mr. Peterson has an opportunity to speak at this point. He's has all the, he already knows quite what we're talking about, so if he wants to talk about it now, that's fine.
Well, I've already said my piece. I feel you should, you should do a sound review of the planning and zoning also.
I'm not going to meddle with, hold on, just thinking as a, as a past member of the committee, and he might have some value in it, so.
Unfortunately, this is one I can add.
I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson.
So unfortunately, this is one I can add.
The other pod member of public wishes to speak?
Oh, very good. We go into old business, and we do not have anything updated for us for this time for item, the quasi-invasive species control grant program. We are still waiting for them to bring forth a documentation to help us out to go to the next step, so I would entertain a motion to continue.
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hopefully, we'll have it by the next meeting. Hopefully. Item F, new business, which is considered an act on tax refunds as requested by the taxpayer, totaling $1,016.06. Anne and Peral for $31.70, Toyota Lease Trust for $505.35, Presidenal Ellen and Bolden for $19.15, and C A D East LLC for $459.86.
Motion to approve the tax refund, and the amount of $1,016.06.
Motion's made. Second. And any other discussion? Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item two is to discuss an act on donation policy as presented. We discussed this before, and we had some input, made, went through with Kelly, she made changes in here.
She did.
Yep. That's why you see that it was created on February 10th, but we made an addition, modifications on top of page 316, 2023. So what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the donation policy as presented.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, it's a draft for the check and cash policy. I did put that, it was a first reading as presented, so you don't have to actually act on it if you want to take with you to review or anything that is written here, but we would like to keep that conjunction with, if they look at the sections, the second section, I also added in revised county policy, which was about a year ago, February 14th, and that goes in conjunction with it. So if I use that to go back and forth, we don't need to take a motion on this tonight, we just have it for a set reading at the next meeting, and we'll make any modifications and changes. Item number four, first reading again for the policy for alcohol and illegal drugs as presented. Just to get a little background on this one, this is something that we have for alcohol and illegal drugs, but we also had a change with the state statutes allowing for modification of what is illegal is not illegal by way of marijuana. So we took a look at other towns and municipalities and what they have, and that's why we drafted it with basically combined the two. So again, as this is a first reading, we don't have to make any motions on this at this point, or say that we can bring it to the next meeting, give you an opportunity to read through it and see if there's anything that needs to be modified, or if there's any questions or concerns. So we can bypass on the, get action on. Item number five, which is to discuss an act on the ARCA Small Business Economic Recovery Grant Program. This is the second round, and Jordan, if you would mind, you did do some follow-up on this with the economic development commission.
Yes, yeah, so they recommended approving a grant for Bubble Laundry Spa. Previously, they had opted, in the board, had opted to award distinctive touch, however distinctive touch, they're processing the selling, so rather, we figured we'd give the other grant that the owner had applied for, the bubbles, and they're going to use that for, to buy some new machines and expand that way. So I'm just requesting that you approve that.
And that's to a full $25,000?
Correct.
Just as a side note, your remaining balance at that point, between the $49,300?
Correct.
Okay. So there are still opportunities for other businesses, so I wanted to know what your pleasure is on this. There's also some background data on the other pages that show you what's been approved or reviewed, but we're tossing that back and forth between one owner or two businesses, but he is pulling back on distinctive touch, so this, this bubble laundry is an opportunity.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve Bubble Laundry Spa LLC for the ARCA Small Business Economic Recovery Grant, for the amount of $25,000. Any anything else in the motion?
No.
That's perfect.
Motion's made.
Second.
Scott, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. While you're here, Jordan, item number six on the agenda talks about the fair housing resolution to Town Plainfield. There's a whole process by which we have to do it on annual basis. We have to continue with this, so for fair housing, this is basically the resolution. It's a long one, as they all are, but basically there's multiple pages in there talking about what the, and especially the backpack, about what fair housing is and equal opportunity. So it's your pleasure, would you like me to read the whole thing, or you want to? Nope. All right. So to shorten it down there, we're looking for discussion in Act on Reappointing Jordan Lumpkin as Fair Housing Officer, Town of Plainfield via the resolution which you had in front of you.
Make a motion to reappoint Jordan Lumpkin as the housing officer of Town of Plainfield via a resolution. I'll second.
Any other discussion? Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, here we go with item number seven. Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks.
Item number seven discusses the, discusses an act on procurement of police evidence shed engineering plans. You have in front of you what we could have done to go out to different companies for engineering, and so as is with most of the initial requests for companies to come back with some numbers for us, give us an idea of whether or not he'll build the bid or not, it's difficult. Five people just need him to do the work. As you can see in here, four local companies requested their information, engineering construction was declined to offer any price at all boundaries, probably because they're, how busy they are, decided that they didn't want to respond to the request. We have CLA engineers out of Norway for $19,200, and Archer Surveying LLC for $9,400. So it is a recommendation of our project supervisor, building inspector, to go forth with the $9,400 for the engineering plans for the police evidence shed.
I have one question. Why the big difference in price? Because I only have CLAs bid here, I don't have Archers, so I don't know why the $10,000 difference.
I'm sure why. This project comes from an area, and he's doing, he's working the town off.
That's usually what, yeah, that's usually what happens when you have someone who's doing a lot of work for municipalities, because they get the volume of work that they're doing, they need to actually do a little bit of pricing. Okay, so what is your pleasure at this time?
Make a motion to approve Archer Surveying LLC for $9,400.
Make a motion, I'll second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, you have now on number eight, the Time Bond, and we are working with Jordan again for Time Bond to work forward with the number eight, which is discussing an act on procurement bypass proposal submitted by Time Bond for the environmental site assessment of Lyons Park as an extension of the current contract. So because they already started to work on this, tell me if I'm wrong in meaning this, but this is an extension of the work.
So basically, DECD, because this is a state-funded program, what we have on Lyons Park, they've asked that we defer to Time Bond, because they've been working on the Royal ground build assessment, so basically, they said they're familiar with the project of the property, so you would have to, basically they said we have to go with them.
They've already done some of the work for this project already?
Yeah, so it'll be an extension of their February 11, 2022 contracts, all the rates and everything are the same, this is just expanding into Lyons Park now, especially because of that slipper that is being promoted.
And we hope to have some resolution on that soon?
Yeah, they'll start tomorrow, yeah.
I spoke to the court of the Superior Court today, and they have all the information and the judgment that was passed out of the land law since the time, and I also have to cancel the check.
That judgment was in 1990?
1995, yes. So they found it in the archives in Harvard, or at the department, and I spoke to the guy today, and we're going to keep all the copies of everything.
Okay. So the continuation is for the $15,000, that's why you see on the next page what the continuation is, so, well, that was our request from, from small town C D.
Yeah.
Any questions for Jordan?
I do. I assume this is coming out of the grant funds?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because that wasn't budgeted.
Uh, it was budgeted, the overarching project, so after we were awarded, we had to break down costs. It's over what was budgeted, originally we had $5,000, because we didn't expect there to be much, to be as much of an issue, so in the final, what did we submit? Because, I mean, it's just like, for example, the fitness ward, that's one lump sum that was budgeted, however, there's many components that go into that, are the overarching project, okay?
I didn't see any application.
Gotcha.
So, and also any application, this property we're talking about, it's not listed as in the boundary on the map. What do you mean? On the map, what are you calling? Isn't this the section we're talking about?
Yes.
So when you applied, you only applied for?
So that's because, as we went through the process, we figured out that there needed to be stormwater retention and, and other aspects of the park that did go into there. So all of the items were purchasing, the playground, everything that's going to be done is going to be within the parcel you're talking about, but there may be some work that needs to be done over there. And also, it's, we're looking for five-year site plan approval, and in five years, rather than have to continuously go back to planning and zoning, we're just including anything that could possibly go in there within the next five years. So we're just trying to do our due diligence.
And all of this is in that section?
What was that?
All of this contamination, whatever they're looking for, is in that section? It's not, there's nothing in the park itself.
So it's, they're going to look at the whole property, just to make sure that?
Lyons Park also.
Correct.
Right. That wasn't the?
They're doing samplings throughout the park, just in case.
There's one more question. It's going to be a syllable, but it might now. I'm going to go with the, the coal ash. What are clinkers, do you know?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay, Marion, do you know what clinkers are?
I don't.
It's in with coal ash?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So.
Where do you see that?
On page two.
Of which section?
Of Time Bond, the proposal.
Okay, right up the pricing?
Yeah. Page two.
Yep.
At the top, second paragraph, coal ash and clinkers was observed below pavement surfaces. Clinkers are, they mentioned at the end, there's the potential that coal ash and clinkers were used as fill for the parking lot base. You see it?
I don't know.
Up top.
Sunburned coal.
You're not on the record.
Hey, sunburned coal.
Unburned, okay.
It's the larger pieces?
And it's crushed up, and then it goes into a clinta unburned.
Oh, very good. That's all my questions.
So we have a request for the procurement bypass of the proposal submitted to Time Bond for the environmental site assessment at Lyons Park as it is an extension of the current contract.
Now make a motion to bypass it, procurement policy, hired Time Bond for this environmental site assessment, Lyons Park.
Motion? I can second it. Any other discussion? I know there's a lot there, there's a lot there, which is why we're doing the site assessment, so.
There is one other question, if, because you said three-day turnover, with the lab report, what would, is it a big difference in price if we went in the normal time? Now, is there a reason we're doing it?
This is just the proposal that they sent, they didn't give us an alternative, but every, all the results will be in by April 7th.
Right, because it says three-day turnover for the lab.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's an alternative option. Let me do a breakdown, so they have, I think it's on, here it says on page four, so for the letter of support comes out, it's for $25,000, and there's two other sections that are listed in there for a limited site assessment and then a mark out of the area for us.
We have basically, DECD said in order to continue with the project, we need to do this first, to make sure that Martin only is all safe, and we're not going to be disturbing it, and they said you have to defer to Time Bond, or basically setting the scope, because they're familiar, as licensed LEPs, they, they have to, you know, they're able to guide us.
And we were looking at other options, too, we've worked with Martin Rogie in the past, but because this state decided that his best way to go is to stay with Time Bond, which makes sense. Any other questions?
Just for a little bit of clarification, I think maybe the expedited timeframe is, because initially, when the project was before the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission, the, the town had issued an extension of time to close the public hearing, thinking to April, and they want, the town wanted to have all the information for that April meeting.
Right.
So Time Bond was looking at April 7th as a, as a delivery date.
We've said it's withdrawn, so it doesn't, I mean, there's not a great push for this, but we do want the data. A motion, I second it, any other discussion? Very good. All in favor say aye.
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 Suppose, same.
Same. Okay, motion passes. On number nine, and this gets into the issue of, back to the procurement policy issue, item nine says, discuss an act on town clerk's reception desk upgrades. The issue that we're looking to fix is that right now it's not an 88 client desk, so if someone comes in with a wheelchair, they go up to it, it makes it very difficult for them to process. What we had asked was to go out to look at someone giving us a bid price for putting this all together and making changes. There were a couple of companies that were contacted, Bert Custom Woodworking, no response. Burke Arts Woodworking, no response. Fortunate thing for the, for us is we have someone who's very adept into woodworking, hence our town building inspector, Rick Martel, he decided he would at least draft it up, so people knew what they were, what we wanted them to do, and he did a very detailed job of drafting everything up, so that you're happy. He also gave a price with all of the materials that he needed, and then we can have our staff do the removal. So the total price that he put in was $6,881. Again, this would be the only bid we have on it, we've reached out to multiple companies and really didn't get anything back. So we wanted to know what your questions or concerns, or just wanted to move forward with it. I think that they'll be starting if approved it, once he gets, you can go to the materials, and then to plan out an appropriate date, so you get to do the work and start working on it.
Not that it's really going to matter, but is it going to be maple, like on this one, or is it going to be oak, like in these planes?
I believe he was talking about the maple plywood.
Okay, because then the oak one, I see particle or malamine.
Yeah, a little of everything going on, because it's behind the desk.
Yeah, that's less quality, isn't it? Yeah, I know where it's working. But he has it on the front, sounds good.
So what is your pleasure with this?
Make a motion to accept bid from Martel Woodworking for the clerk's reception desk for $6,881. I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, any other discussion? Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. For those who go into the town clerk's office, there's a lot of work right on there already, they're doing the replacement for the cabinets that are at the park back, and that is being done hopefully over the next couple of weeks, to start that, so there'll be a lot of activity around. All right, item number 10 is to discuss an act on proposal for authority for the technical general statutes, section 8.2. Item 8.2 has a section E, any city, town, or borough which adopts an addition for this chapter made by a vote of legislative body exempt municipal property from the regulations prescribed by the zoning commission of such city or borough town, but unless it is so voted, municipality property shall be subject to such regulations. So one of the biggest things we have, that's why you wanted to discuss this earlier, because I love the nice just to be through, is, let's see notes. Mr. Chair, some of the notes. All right, so there are a lot of things we're proposing for municipal projects, requiring you to discuss permits, going to Planning and Zoning Commission, anything small, playground equipment, that's the one that really got me to start off with, having to go through planning and zoning if you want to change out a playground, placing a pre-built shed, garage, and it's usually waiting time, it's also the engineering cost, going through all of that permitting for that, and you have to have it all drawn up. Also, an example currently is the police department is attempting to construct a garage, and that's going to be for their storage of evidence in the command center. That is kind of vital for them to store it, because it won't continue to be out to the elements, but also the storage of the evidence. You, you have to go through, right now, through the engineering site plan, and it's a lot of money, as you can see. The fees that cost, we talked about it tonight, you have engineering fees which are going to be costing quite a bit of money through the whole process, whatever it might be, so it's, it really puts more burden on to the taxpayers because of that. I just don't see that why we need to continue to do that process, I may be wrong, but that's
So if you pass this?
Just from municipal properties.
So I get that, we have a lot of municipal properties, open space, schools, police department, town garage, so if you have no site plan, if you have no plan, how do you, how do you move forward with the project?
Well, I don't know, Kyle, what would you say?
You still have to get plans made, drawn up.
What is the stuff we could do in the house?
Did they, you save money in house?
We're not going to be going past the setbacks and things like that. Is that what you're worried about, that we're going to, you go to somebody's property?
No, no, I'm just worried that is.
That point, just a little bit, without a setback.
Hey, according to this.
Hey, according to this, these notes, I still don't understand why we would do this as a municipality. Do you know how many other municipalities do this?
No, I don't know how many, but it's going to save a ton of hard money. The taxpayers, it's going to save the taxpayers a lot of money.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay.
I get that. It, it, it may not in the end, if, if the construction is not up to regulations, zoning regulations.
That's why you have a building inspector to verify that when things are being done, if I'm correct. Can I, can I ask a question about this? And I know it's going back and forth on it, but can you name something else in the town of Plainfield that we actually went through planning and zoning for that is town municipal property in the past? Name one thing on the Alliance Park that we did. How about the police station? How about any of the buildings that we had in town of Plainfield, have we done that?
Okay, that's what I...
I don't know, I'm not sure. I haven't really think about it.
I don't think we have. I think the issue is we've done, gone through the building inspector to verify everything's done enough to code.
I mean, we haven't really done anything on our properties in years. So it's hard to say.
We, we put in playgrounds, basketball courts.
Playground, just saying, playgrounds don't even commit anything.
You put a basketball court, you put it in a playground, did you submit a site plan? You put a playground in the backyard? No.
No, like I said.
You put a basketball hoop in the driveway? Are you submitting the site plan? No. So why should the town have to pay a penalty for regulation for that? It's the taxpayers that are paying it. It's coming out of their pocket. That's why the state allows you...
So as a taxpayer now...
That's the way the state allows you to do that.
As a taxpayer, taxpayer's going to come in, planning zoning, well, why do I need a permit if the town doesn't?
Because there's a state statute that allows us to get around.
You don't need a permit for that, why a basketball court?
Well, the state gives us a statute that allows us an opportunity to bypass it. That's our answer.
And that's to save money for taxpayers. Because they're the ones that are going to be paying it ultimately, and save the town I don't think the state would allow people to do that if it was wrong.
Yeah, I'd like to know how many towns do it. I really would.
Okay.
Be interesting. Get some statistics on that, that would be nice.
And what would that change?
Huh?
Can I ask what would that change?
Why?
If 20 do it and 140 don't, does that change?
Like there's a reason, 140 don't?
There's, there's towns that do and towns that don't. I think that this, it's an opportunity because the state has a statute that allows us to, to opt out from that process. We still have to go through all the specials. Are you looking to table to get more data, and if so, what's the data you're looking for?
I would, I would recommend that. And just...
Well, I need to know what data you're looking for.
Like you think that you can't turn back on.
Okay, so I need to know what data you're looking for, so I can go and see if I can extract it.
Well, beyond data, I, I would personally value the opinion of the planning and zoning commission, given the chair, the public meeting, of course, it's an influence, yeah. Some members of the community, obviously we have some staff here that think we're doing this now, but everything.
What about the other state of Connecticut? Like, can you see if they want to come here too because of the, they have the statute?
Sure.
I'm just...
I know, I know you're saying that, but...
I know, I'm just...
I'm trying to be serious and do what's in the best interest of the town.
Understood.
So I'm trying to be difficult on this, like...
I mean, if it wasn't...
Big decision.
Yeah, if it wasn't here, then obviously we can't do it.
And there's, I believe, there's quite a bit of validity to what Mr. Peterson talked forward earlier, that, you know, we, we should, as a town, probably exemplify more than anything the rules and regulations that we put upon our town's property. So our tradition, me, is just, is too, too much to jump into this.
So you're looking for more data before we make any motions on them?
Sure.
What would you like? Other towns who doesn't, and why?
I'd like to see that. Well, that's interesting, and that's fun. And also, I looked into this this weekend, and this John Rappel, he's principal analyst, he did OLR research report for the town, for the state of Connecticut. And he was asked questions, and people wanted to know if you can apply this retroactively. So now we already voted on police garage, okay? And he says according to 8-2-H, you cannot. Right. So that would, that would not, any proposed projects have to comply with zoning regulations that were in effect before you do this. And the other question I had, you can look into, you can look into that 8-2-H and see if that's, if this, this ban's report is legitimate or not. And also, would this have to go to a town meeting, being the legislative body?
We are this legislative body.
According to the charter, town is the legislative body.
I would just agree with that, but it's okay.
I mean, it doesn't say...
You were voting all night long, you're the legislative body. You were voting all night long, you are legislative body.
That's a strictly legal definition of legislative body, except the town's turn for that.
Which I can get you because we're already asking.
That's kind of a gray area. To go to a town meeting, composition, section 2-1, the legislative powers of the town shall be vested in the town meeting, except as otherwise provided in this chapter. B, the members of the town meeting shall be the electors of the town, and all other persons entitled to vote at town meeting as provided by the general statutes. And the town meeting's called, see, the town meeting's called by the board of selectmen. You go to the board of selectmen. Our duties and responsibilities, the board of selectmen, shall direct and supervise the affairs of the town, and be responsible for coordinating the activities of the officers, boards, commissions, and other agencies of the town. Board of selectmen shall have all powers, duties, and responsibilities conferred upon it by this charter or the general statutes, and all powers proper, hence now, or can be into their exercise. There's no ordinances. So I don't know, it doesn't say we're the legislative body, it just, we do have...
Section 5, it talks about our powers and duties by ways statutes, and there is legislative powers in there. Otherwise, everything we do right here, we should have a town meeting for every single item.
Yeah, well, that's why I was unfortunate, I, that I actually didn't find reason for town meetings.
So other towns and why? Section 8-2-H, anything else? Thank you. If you want to go and make a motion to table, then that's fine, what do you, you want to do?
I did find a survey I defined in 2002, municipal zoning exemptions. Thirty-three that responded to it, 15% of them took the exemption 21 years ago.
40%?
So 15% of them took the exemption out of the 33 that were, that responded to the survey, and that was 21 years ago. So I'll try to get something more up to date, but that's what I just found.
Four of the towns?
What's that?
About four of the towns.
Five.
Five, okay.
East Maraby, Enfield, Kent, Norington, Sarnes. That was in 2002. I'll try to find some, oh, 2002, sorry, so I'll try to find something a little more up to date.
Just, yeah, I'm really struggling with it, just, just because it's, it's not just for a particular property, it's for every municipal property. So it's, I don't know. It's kind of my best feeling, I'm just still getting, if you're asking me to actually make a motion, I'd be more inclined to make a motion to the body, turn this out. But, yeah, I don't want it. So if you want to get some more information, I feel more comfortable with it.
But if your pleasure is...
I, I really would like more information. I, I would, I actually like somebody from the state to explain why they do this.
Save the town's money?
That's it, that's the only reason.
And answer the projects.
Just to clarify the legislative body question, generally what a statute speaks to the legislative body shall whatever. That means town meeting, unless it specifies in whatever it's talking about, unless the legislative body is the town meeting, then it may be adopted by the representative legislative body or the selectmen, but it has to say that in whatever section you're, you're talking about.
And could you give me an example of that by the next...
Yeah, absolutely.
So I can see the difference?
Yeah.
One of these charter things.
So again, what's your pleasure?
I'm not going to dig it up, so I'm not second to that.
Suppose we don't get the site identified, do you have another motion?
I'll make a motion to table, because that's been made, made on.
All right, so a motion to table. So, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Aye. Okay, I now would ask to, take a motion to add item number 11 as new business to discuss, and this isn't going to be long, so. Discuss an act on a resolution to authorize the Plainfield Board of Selectmen, to authorize the first selectmen to apply for DECT funding as state assistance in the amount not to exceed $4 million according to Connecticut General Statutes 32763. Need a motion to add that?
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We go right into it and see, I added item number 11, the actual resolution. We are trying to be aggressive with the inter-royal site. This is the second option we have. We have this one for $4 million, there's the other one for 14 point...
15.
15.
The federal law is for 15, it's pending right now. And this one's for $4 million, and coming up with a deadline of April 17, this is a community investment fund which we're going to apply for also.
So really the idea is, more money is good, federal funding, or funding in and all around, the better a chance we have of ending up in a row on the floor.
So what does this target specifically?
This target's a vacant remediation and some cleanup area.
That's kind of sort of towards the middle of that page, where it shows up.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Make a motion, make a motion to approve this resolution for inter-royal, sorry, brownfield vacant remediation cleanup for $4 million.
Addiction resolution, aye.
Yes, that's a resolution. No second.
So, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I think that is it for our municipal agenda heading out, so there's nothing else other, and a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
7:45, we can jump right on into WPCA. Okay, so let's call this meeting for WPCA order, and March 27th, time is now 7:46. Call for...
All right, heading.
Scott Herring. I'm heading in. Item C, to approve the minutes of WPCA meeting dated February 27.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on February 27, 2020.
Second. A motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment, this is a time for the public to speak, if there's anything they'd like to speak on. Hearing none, going to new business, item one for the new business, discuss and approve purchases of asbestos removal via quotes for the North Plant Boiler Room. Among many other things for the sewer plant, there is also some review of, OSHA's coming in to take a look at some things, this is one of the things they mentioned to us, is you may have asbestos in your boiler. For those who remember from years ago, if your boiler has a open door section to it, usually they had a rope cocking that went around it, made of asbestos. So that's why we needed to review what's going on. We went out to see if there's any companies that were interested in giving us some numbers. What you have in front of you again is the, one of the companies is for Yankee Fiber Control for $5,675. And then you also had ForeRast, the other one was Ramco Environmental Inc. for $7,100. Michael R., major company, had no response, and the action asbestos not interested in giving a quote. So with that, our little bit would be the asbestos removal for the North Plant Boiler Room from Yankee Fiber Control for $5,675.
Motion to approve it.
The data, Yankee Fiber Control for $5,675.
Okay, motions?
No second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the larger of the two, which is going to be a little more involved, is item number two, discuss an act on clean water fund application by authorizing a resolution which is required to obtain clean water fund financing of, of water pollution of vacant facilities. You'll see that there is the resolution in there for this. You still need to go forward with a few other things, this paperwork in there talking about where, there's your list of selectmen, the resolution to obtain the clean water fund, certification by the town clerk, and we got a good D, he's talking about the clean water fund memorandum of its purpose, its regulation, with Pay Act, and so forth. We have more to add to this as well, so I'm going to do that right now. Kelly?
What we need to do tonight is to, the Water Pollution Control Authority needs to set a date and send it to a public hearing and then a special meeting afterwards. So at the public hearing, we can discuss what this clean water fund is. I know it's a part, it's a grant, and part, it's a bond. So how that'll all play out, and then have a meeting on it to send it to the board of selectmen then, to set up the resolution for clean water fund.
We have to start here.
Yeah, we have to start here and set a date, and then we have a calendar for every date that we have.
Very step, along the way.
Yeah.
I did follow up with Lynn after this, just to ensure you in my mind exactly what it had to be.
Yeah.
The statute is 7-247A.
Yep.
And it talks about a notice in place of purpose for not to be mailed no later than 15 days before the date, but that's only if you have acquisition of property or... but that's only if you have acquisition of property or, so that's not required as a 10 day wait, similar to what we do right now before we go to town meeting. So that act two forty-seven A is the starting point here, in your paper that I passed out earlier, it's actually, it's saying three thirty-one, it's actually today's date, three twenty-seven. We'll meet tomorrow as a couple of members of the town will be put together the actual legal notice which goes into the paper.
Yep.
And then from there.
Then you have a special meeting right after.
A bunch of special meetings to go. We plan to have the W P C A meeting tonight to do that, according to the March bulletin, the announcement, and hopefully we'll get that in there within a Friday. That gives us a 10 days public meeting, we, notice of the public meeting, we go to the public meeting and journey to W P C A's special meeting. So we have a bunch of things going on the same night. It'll be W P C A public hearing and then a special meeting that will move us forward to the board of selectmen, which will also meet that night, and we approve the, you know, higher approved recommendation of the appropriation for the issuance of the bonds or bans. And then we forward that to the board of finance and then refer as well to P and Z meeting on four eleven. Then we set a special town meeting day for referendum pending approval from board finance and P and Z. But you see the calendar listed there for it for all of that. Just check the page, you say so far it sounds good. We have the four nineteen twenty-three board finance meeting approves it, goes forward, gives us a five day notification at that point. Special town meeting will be on four twenty-five with a review of the resolution and then journey to referendum. The reason why this is W P C A to start with is because it is for the sewer, but the reason why we go to referendum is a town approval for that to go forward. So it gives us a full 10, 14 days for the referendum. We tried, I asked him tonight about this as well. If we have the initial, normally we have our budget hearing for the town for the May first. Just a lot of people confused about what we're doing, so we do have up to a two week window to do that early, so I asked if it's okay we go to the May fifteenth, which is our act a little bit right on that point. So he said fine, special time meeting on four twenty-five. So we have to start it off, and also, we have to start it off, and what we do is.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing and a special meeting.
So that public hearing, let's make sure we get the dates correct. April 10th is, happens to be also our selectmen meeting. That's not.
Do it earlier.
It's not, yeah, actually we do it later as selectmen because it gives us time for the public meeting.
Okay.
It gives us time to, allow us to forward this over to P and Z and also to the board of finance. And we voted to definitely forward. So we have this public meeting on the 10th for the sewer project. And then we can, so following the public hearing, we then meet as W P C A authorize a special meeting to approve the project. Because it's also over $50,000 easily. Just so you know, we're looking at quite a bit, quite physical, for, roughly how much, four million?
Four million is what we have to get a bond anticipating note for, but that's not how much we're going to finance. We're probably end up financing 3.2 million. Through the Connecticut Clean Water Fund.
Just to clarify, a ban or a bond anticipating note is a temporary loan that you take out, you call it a ban, and then that gives you the opportunity to then find the financing portion of it via a, going out to a regular, or going to a.
A bond.
A bond.
But you're going to just use clean water fund instead of going out to the market to get a bond. Clean water fund already accepted our project, so we're just going to follow the proper paperwork and start it, start the process.
And just to fill in little pieces of that also, when you go out to loan right now, if you were to go out to a loan, your interest rates are rather up there. So this gives us an opportunity, hopefully the interest rates will start dropping off. But in the meantime, the good things are, what we have in reserve funds right now is healthy. That's one of the things they look at, they look at your bond rating, they'll be looking at them again here through this process, so. While it doesn't look promising for the interest rates, it does look promising for the town because we are in a good position, so. So what we have to do tonight, if you want to go forward with this, is get to set a date for the public hearing, and I would say that the setting a date for application for the clean water fund financing through the abatement facilities would be for April 10th.
So that's all you need, a motion to public hearing.
Public hearing and special meeting.
And the same special meeting, the same night.
Same night. For W P C A.
So I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for the clean water fund financing for April 10th, 2023, and also a special for pollution control meeting for April 10th, 2023.
We may have to. And I was going to say, if we do the April 10th public hearing, we can always move our selectmen out. So I would say seven o'clock is usually the time everybody gets.
Seven o'clock.
So seven PM for the special. And then immediately following for our W P C A special meeting.
I would set a date for your board of selectmen meeting because we can't, you know, it has to be like official, so.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
I would also say that our April 10th normal board of selectmen meeting, we could modify and move further out, like, I don't know, eight o'clock? Seven thirty, or you can make it the next day, so we can make it so that we can actually act on it before we go to the next step.
Could you do a special meeting like at six o'clock and then do your board of selectmen at seven, like you normally have it?
So the problem with going at six o'clock for these types of public hearings, not everybody can get here, that's why they usually have it at seven o'clock.
Okay.
It gives a fair opportunity for everybody to get here.
Okay.
We can always change around the board of selectmen, do a cancellation with a special meeting after.
Do you care where the water pollution controls?
We have to name it as a, as a community app.
No, when? Can we have it at, like we do after the board of selectmen?
We can specify a time, just specify a time.
Right.
Because our bond council, last time I went to financing for the 5.5 million for W P C A, we used to use that after, but it's not like an official legal time, like you should have a time set. And that's when the meeting starts and that's when we go to.
How long, how long will this public hearing take?
Half an hour.
Yeah, probably, half an hour.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion. I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the clean water fund financing for April 10th, 2023, at seven o'clock. I'll also make a motion to set our board of selectmen meeting for April 10th, 2023, at seven forty-five with the water pollution control immediately following. Here at a community app. Does that make sense? Edition forty-five, let's.
Does the meeting following have a problem?
You just have to have like a W P C A public hearing into a special meeting, W P C A, you could adjourn that and then have your board selectmen.
Yeah, I would say from seven, seven thirty would be our, our public hearing. And then at seven thirty, we would schedule the special W P C meeting and then our board of selectmen to immediately follow that.
Let me amend my motion. Make a motion to set the public hearing for April 10th, 2023, at seven o'clock and to set the water pollution control board meeting at.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty. Seven thirty, with the board of selectmen being immediately following that.
All of the, a community app.
Yeah, a community app.
Okay, I think that works.
In a second.
You have a motion in the second? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'm going to have to be very careful as we follow through this calendar, but I think part of that W P C A special meeting and then also the board of selectmen, we need to push these forward so that the P and Z has an opportunity to review it and also for the board of finance review. And at that point, we set the meeting for the town meeting to go, sorry, to the referendum, because that's how it processes out. Just so we know, Kelly, for public information, we have a highlights of what we're doing, I know Stephanie's trying to get here tonight, but.
Yeah, yeah, we have a spreadsheet from Stephanie, itemizing what the two, the two projects are going to be, a north plant generator replacement and a secondary clarifier project. So two clarifiers, and they're new, instead of refurbishing that. So then we're hoping they'll.
Last much longer than they want?
Yeah, they'll prove, you know, the orientation and everything.
Of the slide.
That's cool.
Yeah.
I'm happy about that.
Yeah.
I'd asked that.
So it might, you know, you might see a Z.
Glad they can do the new ones.
Yeah. That's our plan, so.
They said they had cracks in the concrete and stuff.
All right, with that, all other items on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All the favors say aye? Aye, it's item one. Thank you.